Is a hard act to follow. Yeah, he did this for a long time. So let's get an official roll call of who is all here on the commission.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Ariaga.
Present.
Commissioner Mayer.
Present.
Commissioner Freitas. I saw her earlier. Dilo, are you still there?
Did you say me?
I said Dilo.
Yes, I'm here. Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Here.
And Commissioner Lazar. Okay, thank you.
Welcome to the Commissioner Lazar.
Thank you.
It's good to have you. So as suit, we're gonna go with a salute to the flag. Jessica, can you bring that up or do you have? And it's really kind of hard with the voices and the feedback. So let's try to get through this as gracefully as possible. Ready begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So I believe in an election of officers is in order for tonight.
Madam Vice Chair, sorry. I believe we need to do the oath of office before we can do the election.
Okay, sounds good. And this one's also a super challenging thing. Normally, it's, you know, repeat after me. Commissioner Lazar, do you have a copy of your oath of office in front of you as well?
I haven't been provided it. So no, I was looking forward to receiving one.
Okay, I definitely have one. So it'll be kind of a repeat after me situation that is hopefully not a big delay. So if you can raise your right hand, please.
Tiana, before you keep going, you can make it easier. Just when you get to the name part, have him say his name. You read the rest of it and have him say I do at the end. He doesn't have to repeat you.
Even easier. Thank you. So Steve, just to start us off, say, I, Stephen Lazar.
I, Stephen Lazar.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, and the Charter of the City of Eureka, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter in the capacity of a member of the Planning Commission for the City of Eureka. Do you take this oath?
I do so swear.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazar, and welcome to us.
Thank you.
Yay.
Welcome aboard. Commissioner Ariaga, we use, we you, we've had a lot of change. Can you just announce for us who the commissioners are just for the public to just make it clear?
Definitely. So for the public, I'm Commissioner Ariaga. And then actually, how about we all introduce ourselves? So go ahead, Commissioner Benson.
I'm Commissioner Benson.
Commissioner Mayer. Yes, I'll go next. My name is Dilo Doris Freitas. And I was appointed last month. So Steve, I only need you by one meeting.
Thanks, Dilo. I'm Steve Lazar. I think we all just saw me take the office right now. So looking forward.
Yeah, fairly new commission. So I'm really excited to get to know you all and to get in the swing of things. Obviously, I'm really new at even leading mission agendas and things and whatnot and leading our missions here. So bear with me. But and following suit, now I believe that we can have our election of officers. Correct staff?
That's correct, yes.
Awesome. So and correct me if I'm wrong. Do we have to do the chair first or vice chair?
You may choose to do it in what order, whatever order you like.
Okay. I have a recommendation for vice chair, and I would like to recommend Meredith Mayer for vice chair.
I would be totally comfortable to second that you guys have been on longest. And I would also put you forward to continue as chair if you're willing.
Second, Tiana staying, moving up to chair. I accept that. So Meredith, would you accept also the role as vice chair?
Yes.
So now we can vote on it officially. Correct staff?
Yes. Is there anybody else that wants to be in the running? Just thirty of the waters here?
Dodge that bullet.
Yeah. Clear. Okay.
Okay, well, then if no one else wants to throw their name in the running, let's have a vote for Meredith Mayer being vice chair.
Aye.
It's one.
Aye.
Aye as well.
Aye.
No nays, all ayes. So Meredith Mayer, you are officially the Eureka Planning Commission's vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations. And so for, for the next, we can have a round of votes for chair.
Aye.
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 Well, and I guess I'm officially the chair of the Eureka Planning Commission. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you both.
Yeah, I appreciate all, appreciate all of you, and hopefully this isn't so painful. Like I said, I'm getting used to things. So with that behind us, then we go into approval of minutes for the previous meeting. I don't know. I hope, hopefully you guys had a chance to take a look at the agenda and look over the meeting notes. And if anybody has anything to say on that.
I didn't have a chance to look it over. It looks fine. I did notice that at the very end I had requested a report on the annual goal setting, and that didn't seem to make it through on the minutes. But I don't know if it really belongs there. That's too much detail. So I would defer to staff on that.
We can certainly add that if the commission would like.
Well, just to get a motion on the floor, this is Commissioner Benson. I'll propose a motion to extend the minutes of last month with the, with the comments from Commissioner Freitas.
Second.
I'd like to abstain from this vote since I wasn't at the meeting and don't feel like you need me for the vote. So.
Okay, well, let's just go with another roundhouse vote of who's left. I approve this.
I approve. Aye.
I was not present at the last meeting, so I also need to abstain. Do we have a quorum with three staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. So and then, yeah, I definitely recommend, you know, everyone, just even if you weren't here, obviously for the last meeting, but if you get a chance just to go over the last meeting notes and just kind of see the flow. I'm still new, even though I've been here for a minute. I'm still new. I still feel new. So there's going to be questions and thing that, things that pop up. So please feel free to interject or ask questions, you know, for us or for staff. As we're getting more into the group of this, you know, just facilitates better learning. And I think all around better dialogue, you know, for transparency and efficiency. So there are no bad questions around here. Oral communications. Nothing here on anything for us staff? No?
We had nobody who asked to speak during oral communications. We do have a couple who asked to speak for later projects.
Okay, great.
I'd like to just take the opportunity to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission. I'm also a new person appointed in January, but asked to defer my start till this meeting tonight. And so I'm really starting in earnest tonight as well.
It's really kind of cool to see some new faces, you know, and I just think it's pretty awesome that you can get a group of strangers together in this sort of space and, you know, create some change and create what, you know, we like to see within the city that we love so much. So it's just really cool to see everyone here. I'm super thankful to be a part of it with you all. So moving on to public hearings. And it seems like there's no continued public hearings, but we do have some new public hearings on, on the docket. And unless anything's changed, this would be a from the meeting agenda, the SC Zone Metal Shipping Container, Container Text Amendment. Correct staff?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so for this one, fellow commissioners, I do have to recuse myself from this process as it, I am linked to this group. So Meredith Mayer is going to lead you through this one.
Well, I think staff can give their report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One moment. So Madam Mayor, sorry. Commissioner Mayer.
Probably won't be the last time that happens. It'd be an easy mistake to make.
All right, so this is the SC Zone, Service Commercial Zone Metal Shipping Container Text Amendment. And the project number is TA-21-0001. And Papa and Barclay has applied to amend the zoning code to allow metal shipping containers or Conex boxes to be used for permanent outdoor storage in the inland SC Service Commercial Zone District. The inland SC Zone is primarily located along the east side of Broadway from the Papa and Barclay site at the gateway to Eureka, up to West Washington Street near the north end of Broadway. And there's one small parcel at the corner of Myrtle and West that is zoned SC. The zoning code currently allows metal shipping containers in the SC Zone on a temporary basis not to exceed 30 days. Staff is proposing and the applicant has agreed with the addition of language, he recommissable code section 155304.110 outdoor storage. Subparagraph F will be changed to allow metal shipping containers as outdoor storage in the SC Zone District, provided the containers are located behind the primary structure whenever possible, or if it's not physically impossible, physically possible, excuse me, then the containers would need to be located as close to the rear of the property as possible. Containers cannot be located between the area between the building and front or exterior side property line, and the Conex box must be painted to match or complement the primary structure on the site. The use table for mixed-use zone districts will also be updated and will add a reference to the outdoor storage non-retail line and reference to the outdoor storage code section. We'll also add a footnote that metal shipping containers used for permanent outdoor storage are principally permitted if they comply with the standards in the outdoor storage section. Otherwise, it'll be a conditionally permitted use and requires a minor use permit. And on your screen, I have for you, whenever you're ready, a suggested motion. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. And the applicant is with us in the meeting tonight.
Does anyone have questions for staff? I have none. Think Stephen raises his hand.
Yeah, just I was interested. It seemed like this was precipitated by Papa and Barclay. Is there been other interest, Kristen, in metal shipping containers that you've heard from other folks throughout the city?
There has not. At least not on the inland side.
That was my wish.
Principal Planner, here's my question. What, what problem is being fixed here? Can you just, can you make that more plain to the commission? What I'm hearing is the 30-day limit. So there's a time constraint that's being fixed here. What other things are being made easier or supporting businesses or costs? Can you talk a little bit more to that?
So the text amendment itself, as you mentioned, is changing the the text amendment is allowing permanent use of Conex or shipping containers in the CS Zone District for storage. They're not currently allowed permanently. They can be allowed for 30 days on a temporary basis at this point in time. So that would be the advantage is that businesses could then install a shipping container, provided it can meet all the the conditions in the code. And then they would be able to use that without having to either remove the shipping container every 30 days and then replace it or be in violation of the code.
Okay. I guess the opposite question of what problem is being fixed is what problems are being created by having shipping containers have a permanent status in, in your mind?
I don't think that there are any problems that are going to be created. It, it really is no different than if they built a new building on their site. I mean, they could build a, a stick-built storage shed. And that would not be subject to the 30-day timeframe. It's just the shipping containers, I think, were probably excluded originally as permanent use because of the aesthetics or the potential for aesthetics for them. But I think with the conditions that we've added, that there should be no issues from an aesthetic standpoint.
Okay, thank you. That answered my questions. I have a number of comments, but I think that would be after the motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think next is public comment.
So I'm Michael Kraft with Papa and Barclay. I'll just talk briefly about what problems this addresses for us. So we're talking about the former Kmart building at the south end of town. And in the last eight months, we put about 10,000 square feet of new uses into that building. And so we had kind of a luxurious storage situation there, but we can see it going away. And so we'll need some kind of permanent fix going forward. This would be our preferred one. Obviously, we could potentially lease pay somewhere else and have our box truck running back and forth across town, making transfers and that kind of thing. But we have activated about 3,000 square feet of retail space. We put in about 2,000 square feet of freezer and cooler space, about 1,600 feet of chocolate production room. And so chunk by chunk, we're using up this building in very good ways. Beautiful thing about shipping containers is they're so climate controlled. So we did look into some less expensive building approaches, like a metal building perhaps. But to get the level of climate control that we want to have for things like cardboard packaging that can get ruined pretty quickly, these shipping containers work rather well. And so our narrow interest is in getting that done and in putting the shipping containers behind the structure. So it's about, you know, several hundred square feet from the 101 corridor behind that big building. So that's kind of what I have to say. I'm happy to answer questions directed to me if there are any. But I will kick it back to you guys.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Kraft?
No specific questions other than thank you for doing business in the City of Eureka and for bringing this forward for our consideration.
Stephen might have a question there. Commissioner Lazar.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft, this is for Mr. Kraft. The, the shipping containers, are you envisioning these being a permanent, I mean, or semi-permanent piece of infrastructure? Or would there be potentially a rotation of sorts where it was brought onto the site by somebody that you do business with? Right? You deal with the extraction industry. So obviously, there's deliveries and distribution points that occur. Are you envisioning it more like a commercial coach that is a sort of way of getting a commercial space in place without building a stick-built structure but achieving the same goal?
I think it's fair to say we would see them at least as semi-permanent. And the alternate use that you described with people coming going, that that's not part of this. We've got a pretty busy shipping and receiving area that is one of those uses in the, in the main building. So I guess the answer is yes.
So just to follow up, it's, it sounds like this is a way of kind of creating additional space for the problem you're seeing, you're forecasting in terms of occupying, reoccupying the Kmart building without expanding the footprint of the building, but doing it in a more modular, kind of discreet way with, with auxiliary storage.
Correct.
Okay. I guess I would just comment that I see this as an asset beyond this particular business because we, as a city, are trying to court this type of industry and trying to augment existing structures can be problematic versus starting from a, you know, established, built-to-suit type of thing that, you know, like modular homes, these are expected for compliance when they roll off the line. So I do see this as being beneficial beyond the scope of this particular applicant. That's all.
Thank you. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Just for the record, Madam Vice Chair, we did not have anybody else who asked to speak on this item. So you could go ahead and close the public hearing if you're ready.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing.
I agree with what Commissioner Lazar said, and I also agree with Principal Planner Getz's report and analysis that the only real concern would likely be aesthetics, but on the whole, it would be beneficial for businesses. And I do think as it is conditioned, it will give some flexibility as well for the shipping containers to be placed behind buildings and out of sight. But if there is, you know, an issue with not being able to place it behind the building, then they have the flexibility to work with staff to find a solution as opposed to having to either have that outright denied or go through another process to get, to get that undertaken. I personally feel comfortable with it. So unless there's further discussion, I'm happy to make the motion.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is really true. Also, they're easily moved. So a building can fluctuate if there was traffic issues or those kinds of things on the backside. They're, they're easy to move around, which makes them really flexible.
I have a number of comments, and I was gonna wait for the motion, but I, but it seems like we're in conversation about it pre-motion. So I guess I'll just speak. I, I like, I'm, I'm in support of the motion in that it, it seems to create ease for businesses. It seems to support businesses. It seems to be low cost. It seems to be portable. It seems to be an adaptive reuse of Conex boxes. And in my reading of the General Plan for Service Commercial, the SC Zone, that includes office, I'm just gonna read it, retail, office, restaurants, lodging, entertainment, outdoor sales, storage, warehousing, and limited residential. So storage is, is one of the purposes of that service of the SC Zone. My, my concerns are visual, you know, just a downgrade to the visual quality of the commercial corridor. An eyesore, in a sense, I appreciate that, that, that that Principal Planner Getz is, has specified as a condition of approval, is that, is that it be painted to be like the building? So we don't have sort of these multicolored, you know, freight, freight Conex boxes. I'm a little concerned about that some of the SC zones are on the edge of open space. So seeing them from, for, for example, Palco Marsh and the Eureka Waterfront Trail, which abuts against the SC Zone, is again, sort of that, that downgrade of the visual quality of what we're trying to make sort of a jewel of the City of Eureka with the waterfront trail. And it seems, I'm, I didn't, and I'm not, I'd like to see something in the, in there about, you know, obviously not, it, it not being allowed to store any kind of hazardous materials at all because of tsunami and earthquake mobility of those. So I would, I would move to, to have the Planning Commission adopt a resolution that might make, might make this a semi-permanent rather than a permanence approval. I'm concerned about 30 years from now, you know, people, us having a lot of these boxes because we've made this possible tonight. And in this particular case of Kmart, it's, it's, it's a reasonable request. But I'm, I'm just a little bit hesitant to use that word permanent and would like to see a more semi-permanent status, something way beyond three months because that's just unreasonable. But maybe something like a, you know, a year that, and then it can be, it can be re, re, just with, without having to go through the planning commission, be, you know, reaffirmed, you know, on, on an annual basis. But, but it'd be nice to not create a city of sort of Lego building blocks of Conex containers with our action tonight. It'd be nice to have some limitation to that. And I'm open to what that might look like from any other, other commissioners. That's the, that's the total of my comments on this.
Madam Vice Chair, may I clarify a point?
Yes, please do.
Commissioner Benson expressed concern regarding these being visible from the waterfront trail and also mentioned tsunami potential tsunami issues. I just wanted to clarify that the SC Zone District is on the east side of Broadway. So I don't believe there's really any place that you're going to be able to see the Conex box or it's less than likely you would be able to see it from the waterfront, from the, sorry, from the waterfront trail. You might, in some location, be able to look across Broadway and see it from the trail. But I, I think the likelihood that that would happen is rather low. Likewise, tsunami inundation, well, some places, yes, it might go all the way across Broadway. Again, I think that that's less than likely.
Principal Planner, I have one further point of clarification. I wanted to ask you. I know that there are some screening provisions in other places in the code as well that would still apply in addition to this new language that is now being created. Is that correct? Can you verify what other, what other restrictions there would be related to aesthetics?
Yes, there, the potential there is for screening, either fencing or landscaping to be required, depending on exactly where it's located on the site.
So to be clear, Commissioner Benson, were you trying to make a motion about an edit? Take your temperature?
I think I will, you know, try that. I haven't wordsmithed it very well yet, but I guess I'll just see if it comes. Okay, I move the planning commission adopt a resolution making the findings required to approve a text amendment. And I further move we forward a recommendation to the city council to adopt the text amendment to allow metal shipping shipping containers for semi-permanent outdoor storage and non-hazardous materials use in the SC Service Commercial Zone District.
Think as discussion here.
I think we need a second to discuss it, but I made the change from permanent to semi-permanent, and I added non-hazardous materials to the existing language.
I'd be happy to second for the purposes of discussion.
All right, we have a second. Open it up for discussion for the commission. I'll say I'm okay with it being permanent. I think it's a little cumbersome moment of business to have to get a yearly permit. Just one more thing for businesses to have to remember. One more thing for the city to perhaps send out, have to send out notices. And I think the eyesore portion of that is being dealt with in this resolution already. But I I could see the hazardous materials perhaps being an issue, but again, they're not any less secure than a building, so I'm not sure that it would come in to play here.
Just to respond to that, my, you know, they're they're not anchored to the ground, so so seismically. And if we hit any of the moderate, we're really having this conservative estimate of sea level rise where there's two other scenarios out there that that, again, that word permanence comes to mind. I would like the city to be able to ask people to move them if we end up in a different kind of seismic or or sea level rise condition than we are currently, you know, forecasting. And and I and I agree. Commissioner Mayor, that, you know, a year is probably unreasonable. I'm what what's five? How about five years? You know, I mean, just just something that isn't permanent, where we're saying those can be there in perpetuity, no matter what changes in the city. People will have the right to have these temporary Conex shipping containers as storage as, you know, as their main as their main storage. And there could be a promulgation of that might not be in the best interest of of the city compared to permanent buildings. That's that's all I'm trying to say here. And even if it's every 10 years, but just not permanent is where I'm going with this.
Because what you're saying is a valid point. I I hear that. But I think, you know, a further year, five is probably more reasonable. 10, yeah, a lot can change in 10 years, but.
Matt, excuse me, Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
I believe that the building code actually requires these to be permanently affixed to the ground. So they're either going to have to be installed on a foundation or otherwise locked to the ground. So that may make it a little more challenging for businesses to remove them.
You said you believe, but do you know that for sure? Or would you need to check on that?
So I know for sure that the shipping containers that were installed down on Coast Seafood's property on the waterfront, those were required to be permanently affixed to the ground. And I believe that that would still apply here.
It is lovely to have staff and all the information they bring. Thank you. Because I'm making assumptions from what I've seen around town. I haven't seen them affixed to the ground. So and maybe maybe that. And so maybe we we make that plain tonight that they that they be if that they be affixed to the ground.
A comment I'd like to make, too, is I mostly agree with Commissioner Mayor, and it would be challenging for businesses and also, I believe, for staff in terms of enforcement for whether or not hazardous materials are located in a box. I have no idea how that would be enforced or on what sort of schedule. I would prefer to not include that, just because I believe it would be challenging to enforce and practice.
Understood. The the reason I'm including that is was based on the assumption of their mobility in an earthquake and spillage that could happen. That's why I put that in there.
Would you like to edit your motion to come back at it? Or do we need to go to a vote on this motion for him to have to edit that? If he so.
My understanding is that we can edit it as we as we go. And some of the other comments can be, you know, conditions that aren't necessarily part of the part of the the motion, if I understand this correctly.
That would be correct, yes.
Okay, I'm willing to to just to change it, just to keep semi-permanent in, but take out the piece about non-hazardous waste. If if, in fact, they have to be affixed to the ground. It just, it seems to me that that that's having to affix it to the ground is adding a burden to business owners. So that part of portability and and supporting businesses by giving them sort of an adaptive reuse of something when you have to fix it to the ground, and suddenly that's a lot more effort, time, and money to basically get a get a quick storage container.
I would second your edit with semi-permanence. Do we need to be specific in what that length would be?
No, I think.
We should, we should include some direction to the council as far as our idea, what that would mean. Otherwise, it would really be hard. It would be difficult for them to divine.
I agree.
And I would just offer, I think, so a couple of things. The I think we probably have some examples of some shipping containers that are outlive their 30-day period that may be making us think that they're not required to be anchored. We've seen them emerge in the county for cannabis farms as a way of providing a secure location for materials and equipment. And I'm fairly certain they're always required to be anchored where we permit them in the sense that when getting to the permanent part of it, I'm glad Commissioner Benson brought that up. I didn't really think of that, but that is something that could outlive its usefulness. And I think we have an analog on the North Spit with the coastal dependent industrial lands that are being reused with caveats that interim users can only live there for 10 years at a maximum, and they have to be renewed after that through a use permit process. I don't know that we have to go that far, but I think the idea is a shipping container is great as a start, as a way to solve a short-term problem, but in terms of overall investment, if a business begins to kind of realize this is a necessary piece of their infrastructure, it would be appropriate to make that extension into a more conventional and permanent investment in a building of some sort. So I think that's kind of the point is like, where's the where's the fine piece? But maybe five years is a way to kind of give them an initial realistic period to try it out, but but also a reminder that they have to revisit that at that juncture. So I'm just throwing that out there.
I'd be willing to go even longer if we're going to have a time limit at all. Maybe 10 years. Or maybe staff could, you know, provide some direction on what they think would be a feasible duration based on other examples that they have for similar things already in place.
Staff, is it reasonable for us to put a range of five to 10 years? And and add that to the motion? Semi semi-permanent on on a horizon of a planning horizon of five to 10 years?
You may choose to make whatever recommendation the commission can agree to to the council.
Okay, sorry. The answers to non-factual questions.
So five to 10 years.
Let me reframe the question. Are there other ordinances that that are intended to be semi-permanent that have review on or the order of five to 10 years?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. The only time that that could potentially happen is if the planning commission approved a use permit and put a timeline or timeframe on the use. But that comes from a discretionary process and, you know, would be a condition of approval. So.
You bring back.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Can you bring back up the motion? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off either. Finish what you're saying.
You know, Principal Gatz, one potential equivalent that comes to my mind is a Mills Act agreement, which is a 10-year term, at which point it can be re-upped. And it's sort of an administrative process to do so. But that is kind of different because it's an administrative for a financial agreement and doesn't have anything to do with the use necessarily. So I don't know if we consider that an equivalent or not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Freitas. So I'm going to amend this motion to also just get it done. And keeping the language ship metal shipping containers for semi-permanent outdoor storage for a renewable term of five to 10 years in the SC Service Commercial Zone District.
Question for staff. So Kristen, I I noticed in the footnote in the code here that we're saying that they're principally permitted use for both retail and non-retail. So could it, is that is that is that correct? There would be no discretionary permit trigger for a metal shipping container, meaning the performance standards?
Correct. As long as they're in compliance with the language in section 304 dash or 304.110, which is the part about it being located behind the primary structure and being painted, then it is principally permitted. If it's not going to meet any of those requirements, then they need a minor use permit.
So perhaps a way to solve this, commissioners, would be to just say that it would be principally permitted for a period of, say, up to 10 years. And if longer with a use permit or minor use permit, perhaps.
Sure, I'm open to a solution that that meets the intent here and that passes muster in terms of fitting with the with, you know, other other zoning ordinances.
Just for clarity, would you like to make that more formal and reread your motion?
Sure. Stephen, will you help me out with that language so that I can repeat it, please?
Okay. So in the motion where it says to allow metal shipping containers for permanent outdoor storage, we can use your language semi-permanent outdoor storage in the SC Service Commercial Zoning District. And then I'd say, as a principally permitted use, when in conformance with 155.304 to point 110 point F, I'm just reading off of the footnote here, or and and limited to a period of 10 years or less or with or longer with a minor use permit.
Okay, I'm never going to be able to repeat all that. So I'm just going to ask amended per what the language, as as Stephen, as Commissioner Lazar just gave us.
So to clarify, sorry, guys. To clarify that motion, that last part, Commissioner Lazar, would be principally permitted for a period of 10 years, after which point it would be to return before the planning commission for a minor use permit and then could potentially be extended for, you know, a to be determined period of time. Was that the intent of your motion?
That's a good question. I guess what I was envisioning is an applicant could choose to so secure the minor use permit right off the bat if they knew they wanted this to be there permanently, or at least as permanently as they could envision it. And this for go the the principally permitted. So either scenario would work. So whether renewing a term of a 10-year approval or or going from the beginning as a longer term, that was the the minor use permit. I guess I would ask, does that make sense to you, Principal Planner Gatz?
I believe I understand what the commission is looking for, yes.
I'll second your motion. We go to a vote?
Ready?
Could we get a roll call for the vote? Yeah. Make it a bit more orderly. Commissioner Freitas?
Hi.
Commissioner Benson?
Hi.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
I also say yes.
So we have four yes votes. Motion carries. Commissioner Ariaga recuse.
Thank you, commissioners, for working with me on that and collab being collaborative.
She's back.
I'm back. I missed you guys. I felt so so alone on Survivor Island. It's literally how it feels. Banished. Great work, though. So staff, just, is there any update for us regarding item B that was removed and renoticed for June 14th, but the Cook and Kalason Alley vacation, anything that we need to know about now?
No, just an explanation. It was put forth as a summary vacation. And we very recently learned that it actually needs to go through the general vacation process. So we need to revise that staff report and resolution and get that back to you next month. It will be renoticed because there's a substantial change to the project. So it's just pulled off the agenda for this evening.
Okay, thank you for that. Then moving on to item C, Golden State Financial Services Conditional Use Permit and Coastal Development Permit. Take it away, staff.
Everyone hear me okay? Good evening. Let me share my screen here. Am I showing my proper screen or am I showing my notes like I always do? Luck of the Irish. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to discuss the Golden State Financial Services Indoor Cannabis Cultivation Use Permit and Coastal Development Permit. They are located over at 1735 Second Street, which is in the lovely Bridge District. Approximately a block east of the small bridge there at the corner of Second and S Street. And site info. Let me find that part. It's an existing metal building, approximately 8,300 square feet total. It's in an area of light industrial, commercial businesses, and some residential. It's located at Second and Mass. It's in the Service Commercial Zone District. The CS, which is the coastal version, not to be confused with the SC, which is the inland version. The general plan, land use is general commercial. And a quick project summary. The applicant proposes to operate an indoor cannabis cultivation facility, which would be 5,000 square feet or less. Indoor cannabis cultivation is included in our cannabis use. It requires a conditional use permit, which in turn triggers a coastal development permit. And Eureka has the permit jurisdiction on this one. The coastal development permit is not applicable to the coastal commission. And Eureka has the permit jurisdiction on this one. The coastal development permit is not applicable to the coastal commission. And the use of indoor cultivation is good for the entire parcel if it's approved. Quick summary of findings. The proposed cannabis use is considered a commercial use. Will not impact coastal resources. It is appropriately located. It meets development standards and it's not a threat to public health or safety. Continuing my statement of summary of findings for further analysis of the findings required by the Eureka Municipal Code to approve the CUP and CBT are in the staff report and all required findings can be made according to staff. I did receive some comments on this one. There was a nice group of concerned citizens that came forward and shot me an email and also expressed concerns to the coastal commission. And those concerns were primarily to do with odor control fears and a little bit of waste disposal issue as well. And then I also talked with coastal commission staff, Sam Riege, who brought up the point that we were going off of, there's a couple of different code sections that deal with cannabis, one for our inland section and one for our coastal. And there's a slight difference in the definition of the cultivation area between the coastal and inland zone. So she was so kind as to point out, we were using the wrong calculation. So I will address that at the end of the presentation here. To deal with the odor control program, the applicant applicant has submitted what staff considers an acceptable odor control plan. It's consisting of a system that's going to maintain negative air pressure 24/7 with air scrubbing via state-of-the-art can queue max fans and can filter carbon filters with pre-filters. And I was able to, the applicant was very quick to provide me with a lot of information regarding the technical specifications of their odor control devices, both fans and filters. And I didn't include them in my presentation here, but I did forward them along to the concerned public members. I couldn't include them in our presentation because there was a lot of mucho paperwork. So there was a lot of stuff I didn't want to bog down. But basically, in our code, the statement that that is in charge of odor control says something to the effect of no odor shall be detectable outside the walls of the facility. And the City of Eureka Cannabis Permit Program requires all cannabis operations to have a robust odor control in place. And odor control is a complaint-driven nuisance that the city takes very seriously and we've had to enforce in the past. Continuing, just for an example, there were two other existing indoor cultivation sites in the same neighborhood. And one of them has been our longest operational indoor cultivation site. And we've had no odor control complaints in the neighborhood. So this is kind of how we're helping people do things. As far as there was a also a complaint about or just a concern, wondering what kind of waste management plan is is in place. And the applicant provided that all waste will be hauled to fully permitted solid waste landfill. And all runoff will go directly into the city wastewater collection system with a maximum estimate of 240 gallons per day. And just so you know, the plans were referred to and reviewed by our wastewater staff and they had no comments. So that usually means they're in support. And then the last issue of the square footage calculation, the original calculations were based upon canopy area. When they should have been based upon gross floor area of the cultivation rooms. So the applicant was able to revise the plans very quickly and bring the total gross floor area under 5,000 square feet. By a combination of removing a bedroom that they had planned to use and then adjusting the size of their proposed cultivation rooms. So here was the original plan. And the lower right, you can see a bedroom that is no longer going to be part of the project. And then they did some slight modifications to their cultivation rooms to bring them down to that 5,000 square foot target. So the square footage cultivation area, yeah, the bedroom has been repurposed into a storage room. And the newly adjusted cultivation rooms now have gross floor areas of 2515 and 2459 for a gross floor area total of 4974. So they got close to the 5,000, but they stayed under it. And this is the revised layout. And it's hard to detect, but the both the cultivation rooms have been reduced in size. And the bedroom has been refurbished into a storage room. And with that, I have a recommended motion. I'm available for some questions. And we also have applicants with us. And they're available for questions as well.
Awesome. Thank you, staff. Do we, commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
I have one and I want to thank staff for putting together some of the answers to the questions I would have asked if they hadn't provided it. Could we hear a little bit more about when you've had it for odor? What the situation has been and what staff has done to address it? Have the business come into compliance? Has their permit ever been revoked? What would we be looking at if we did receive a complaint?
Sure. I have taken over the cannabis program somewhat recently, but in the about approximately a year I've been running the program, we did have an issue with a business located over near Costco. Somebody complained. And we sent our code enforcement folks over. And they also did detect the aroma. So we contacted the permit holder and said, we're going to take your, you know, we're going to shut you down unless you can, you know, solve this problem. And they were very responsive and they definitely solved the problem. So that's what I explained to some of the concerned citizens today. We, we have a very aware code enforcement unit. And they're always driving around and they know where all the cannabis businesses are. So they definitely roll, roll down the windows and give a good sniff here and there. So that's the only case that I know of. And we didn't have to shut the person down. But we were on top of it. And anytime we, we get an app or a complaint, we take it very seriously.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have some general concerns just on sort of impacts on the character of the city over, over time. I've been on the commission a short amount of time. This is already the second grow facility that, that being asked to approve. Approve the last one on Jacob's Avenue, but character of the city, I just think about tourism and I think about the, the financial impact of, of what's looking to be a boom and bust industry. And, and certainly impacts on adjacent businesses and residents. And I certainly read the, the two, the two letters that were forwarded from, from the the Bridge District Neighborhood Watch and the Red Lion Hotel. And so, you know, odor, I guess I'm, I'm getting to a question. Planner Topaleski, and that's about, and that is about odor. And I, and what I'm hearing is that it's complaint driven and there have not been complaints to some other sites that are adjacent with the same activities. Do they have, here's my question, do they have the highest level of scrubbers and carbon filters and ventilation and recirculation that is sort of reasonably technically available at this time, some of the nearby grow sites?
You know, that's a good question. I, I don't know, I'm not keeping, you know, up to date on the latest technology. But I do know it seems to be working. Because I also do periodic drive arounds, you know, just as a member of the community, you know, getting my coffee or whatnot. I'll, I'll definitely do some drive-bys. And if I'm in the neighborhood, I'll roll down my windows and I think they must be using some good technology. And Commissioner Ariaga might be able to speak to that too. She's, she's got chops in the game.
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely shed some insight on that, just even from my personal business. I work with Pop and Barclay and we have an, an extensive HVAC system that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to install. We have a 10,000 square foot building that's right next door to Living Styles that infuses a lot of our products and you can't smell anything out of that building. A lot of, uh, industry professionals all around Eureka have been in and out of so many facilities and it's amazing the cost that's put into odor mitigation from all of these businesses and how serious they take it. On, you know, a lot of these businesses have paid, have paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for their licenses, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And these are a lot of private, small people who have put that type of sweat equity into their businesses. And that's the last thing that anybody wants is to be a bad neighbor, especially when you put so much into it. You know, these aren't easy businesses to build. And as far as indoor cultivation goes, just a comment, you know, there is a lot of, you know, large-scale farms on the market, especially outside of Humboldt County. There aren't a lot of indoor cultivation sites throughout California. There is a lack of supply, as you'd say. So there is a huge demand for this sort of business on the value of the flower and the products that are made from indoor facilities stays really high consistently throughout the year, which is a really good vol- value proposition, like in the business side of things. So, you know, there, I think a lot of fears are behind like overproduction in this, you know, in that, that space. And we have yet to truly see it here in California. So that's just my, my personal comment. But yes, it's like the odor mitigation from every business that I've been to. And I've seen so many of, I don't know, 30 to 50 businesses within, you know, the city of Eureka and surrounding areas. And they take it very serious, as does the city. So.
I guess I have a sharper question. Is zero, zero for odor, is that possible? Or, or in the case of a blackout and backup system, without backup systems, is there, is there a scenario without going too far afield into a big earthquake or something, or a big fire, where, where is it, is that a reasonable expectation to have zero odor?
We have a, we have a little bit of insight on what the actual system is, if you want to. This is Jamie, the ground up construction. I helped to design the project and we called out all the equipment on the project. We built over 1,000 cultivation facilities in the last 25 years in Humboldt County. We know a lot about smoke control. Our HVAC system is specially designed for cannabis, is made by Accelerated Growth Solutions. It includes a carbon filtration system. So any air that does leave the unit gets filtered through carbon filtration. The units are built by Aon, specially built, who is a specialty HVAC manufacturer that manufactures medical equipment and equipment for schools. The equipment also has a 0% leak rate where standard HVAC equipment is allowed an 11% leak rate. So the equipment that we're putting in is much higher grade than a normal HVAC system. That being said, the building construction itself, we're planning on using DPS panels. So the whole entire structure is going to be built out of freezer panels and be sealed up much better than traditional construction.
Thank you.
Also, can we get your name one more time for the commission? I, I missed it. Who was speaking? Okay. In, in the staff report that I ever, there was a, a snippet talking about negative pressure. Could you explain your negative pressure facility and how that impacts odor?
That goes back to the controls that are built by the AGS Accelerated Growth Solutions. They control all the pressures in the building. So we're going to have negative pressures in all the hallways. We're going to be venting all that air through carbon filtration. As well as scrubbing all that air inside of those areas. So we should have zero air leaving the building.
So Commissioner Benson, to ask, answer your question, you know, a little bit further. It's really hard for odor to escape when there's a really highly negative pressurized building, you know, 24/7. And in the event of powder hour adages and things like that, do you guys have any plans as far as generators and things like that for your, your facility?
Yes, we do. We've planned an automatic transfer switch and automatic generator starting system.
Okay.
Thank you. That answers my, my questions about the risk of, of odor and the backup plans. Thank you.
Also, Commissioner Benson, to follow up on your, the first thought you had about a lot of these businesses popping up. And is this what we want, you know, for our city? One thing to think about is if it is a boom and bust industry and if it, if the industry does dry up, we're requiring all these applicants to go into these locations. And if they spend over $50,000, they have to do what we call spruce ups. You know, they have to take, take the property and really do some improvements to it. So you could look at it as if, if the industry does leave town, we're going to have a really good, you know, selection of turnkey businesses. So that's a positive.
Help, help educate me a little bit as a new commissioner. Has there been some motion by city council where we have a, do we have a limit? Is there some end are going to be allowed as a commission to approve?
We, we did put a cap on dispensaries. And currently, we're not accepting any new dispensary applications. But we're in the process of doing a cannabis code update that's going to reopen that because after going through that process, the council feels that having a competitive business market would be a better solution. So that's going to be coming back online in the inland code somewhere or an inland section of town somewhere around August. And then in the coastal zone a few months after, sometime in the fall. But for the rest of the stuff, no, we don't have any caps. We're just doing a competitive business market.
Okay. I believe this is my last question. You know, indoor grows have high energy demands. And I'm, and I'm wondering if, as a, has any kind of solar array been considered for the roof area of this particular proposal?
I didn't see any on the plans, but does anybody from the applicant group want to chime in on that one?
It's a point of curiosity, not a point of approval.
There you go. Devin and the gang, do you guys have any plans to someday maybe put some solar panels up on the roof?
Solar panels, Jamie? Maybe at some point. Right now, we're just trying to get through this process and do what we can do, but maybe in the future.
Then I have a question for the applicants. What, what type of lights are you using? Are you planning on using in your facility? The grow lights specifically for your flower room?
Gavita 1,000 watt HIDs. And we may switch to the LEDs. We're just not quite there yet in believing that they're a good replacement and they're sort of cost prohibitive as well.
Yeah, they are.
Good LEDs, use the same wattage as the HIDs. So there's really no energy savings in going to LEDs.
Okay, thank you. So do commissioners have any other questions for the applicants or staff? Because if not, I'd like to open it up to public comment.
I had a question for staff. Yeah, Riley, can you explain the revocation process, the mechanics of it? Does it start with the complaint and then a workout with the applicant? And if you reach an impasse, does it move on to the planning commission and ultimately the council? Is that the trajectory or a revocation of a permit?
I don't think we have to involve council for, for revoking a permit. I believe if we find just cause, we are, you know, it, it depends, Steve, because every permit type, oh, there's 12 different permit types and you know, for something like a dispensary, sometimes we go, have to go and do inspections because there's some broken windows or some burglary attempts. So if an applicant is not, you know, we give them more of a, a leeway on that one. But if it continues to be a problem, you know, it could could end up being something where we look at revoking a permit. But to date, we haven't revoked any permits. You know, a lot of permits have gone by the wayside just because people have not been able to perform on their projects and whatnot, but we haven't, as far as I know, revoked any permits due to any any bad behavior.
Thanks. And and I guess the reason I ask is because, you know, from my experience at the county level, revocation is a very cumbersome process and it requires quite a bit of due process to get to an outcome. And for that reason, it it isn't really a good way to enforce regulations. It just isn't isn't nimble enough. But I am listening to what Senior Planner Topoluski saying about the history we have with the application we've already approved. I also know that it is totally possible to deal with odor control. It's well proven. The industry had to do that before it was legal for other reasons. So it's not an impossible task. I do have some concerns about the energy use, but I'll reserve that for after we've taken a public comments and moved on from there.
All right. So if there's no other questions to staff or to the applicants, going once, twice? All right, and let's open up to public comment.
Mr. Kircher?
Yes.
Are you ready to go?
Yeah.
All right, you have three minutes and go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, I was gonna address some various issues, but I had a chance to talk with Mr. Topoluski this morning. I've got a better idea of what was written and required of the applicant that we, the residents, and the general public were not aware of. Nowhere in the document that's publicly available was the residential or tourism component of the neighborhood mentioned, and nowhere was there any mention of what mitigation factors would be put into place or required of the applicant that we, the residents, were concerned about. And having talked to him, I've got a better sense of that. And I was gonna come on in my comments tonight, ask him to go through that, what we discussed this morning with the mitigating factors, which he actually has done before I requested it. So my only comment would be, I would further recommend the board that your boilerplate worrying in the original public documents be changed to allow for room to be more specific on what has already been put in place and addressed, thus saving you and the concerned citizens the headaches of spending major amount of time addressing and worrying over the impacts of such a project that have already been addressed to some extent. And I still have some concerns related to the stench and feel that we should allow these grows in the industrial area zoning to protect residents and and residents and businesses from any off-venting from the sites. This is how the cannabis grows are handled in the entire state of Washington. They're relegated to industrial areas. So I thank you, Commissioner Topoluski, for going through what the applicant has already had. And that's about the only issues I have, you know, to bring up between the board now. You've all got copies of what we wrote and you've seen what has been addressed. And I thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Kircher. We appreciate you reaching out and and voicing everything that you wanted to discuss with us on the commission. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And if you'll stand by just a moment, I will get our second speaker on the phone. So I have Ben Breckenridge on the phone with us and he has three minutes.
Hi, Commissioners. Thanks. Thanks so much for taking the time to hear my comments. I'm super excited to see Steve Lazar on. Steve, you've been an awesome planner to work with up in the county and I'm glad that you're keeping an eye on this process. I just wanted to reach out because my neighbors in the Bridge District put this letter together, raising some complaints around odor and some of the other issues that sound like they've been addressed. I just want to say thank you to the city and the planners for doing the due diligence that was required to bring this project forward. And also really excited to see this project in the neighborhood. So if there's an odor issue, I'll be there with my neighbors protesting against it. You guys will be the first to get a call, but it sounds like the the process has been fully mitigated. And I'm glad to see another cannabis business coming into my neighborhood. That means more security cameras. It means more people in occupied buildings and it means less tweakers in my neighborhood. So thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Breckenridge. Appreciate it. Commissioner Lazar, you already have a fan. Doing good work. Staff, is there any other individuals that have shown up for public comment?
No one else has requested to speak.
Hey, well, if there's no one else there, then I would like to close a public comment and bring it back to the commissioners. So in light of of anything that was said, do you have any other questions for staff? Any other comments?
I do have one comment that sort of dovetails with the last speaker's points about sort of encouraging appropriate use in the Bridge District. It's kind of a strange, unique part of the city where there's, you know, a mix of residential and pretty heavy industrial use types, along with some really incredible recreation opportunities. I see on the whole, this project as being a real benefit. It's an existing industrial site that clearly needs a tenant and it will bring in good activity, good eyes on the street. And it will also provide good jobs for probably mostly young people who will most likely use the trail and be out and about and go to Old Town to get lunch. I think it will actually increase just the liveliness of that area. And I think the neighbors will come to actually appreciate their presence.
I would like to address the first speaker's comments about their notices. I, when I read the letter, that was my immediate thought was like, hey, we, you know, the city's already dealing with the odor control is part of the code. And I'm just wondering if, you know, he has a point in the future, if you could include that, like a link or somewhere they can find that because the the code is public and something that they could read, but they might not know where to find it. But that definitely would have mitigated a lot of their concerns and issues around the project, I think, from the beginning. So that might, I think that's a true helpful comment from concerned citizen.
Yeah, that's a great point. When I was talking to Mr. Kircher today, that's what I determined as well, that, you know, we spend so much time addressing our findings, addressing the code and the purpose of the code, but some of that language would go a long way. So that's what I told Mr. Kircher as well, that we're gonna update our boilerplate language and include some snippets of odor control and a security plan and maybe even something to do with waste removal. So, yeah.
Yeah, Planner Topoleski, I was going to just, you know, add to that, you know, as well to include, because there were concerns about tailwater, you know, what would happen with with irrigation related water, you know, through after it goes through the system, how that's treated, you know, any language that we have for that, any language about secondary containment of chemicals, you know, just so that all that's available to folks with a hyperlink would would be really great because those seem to be the issues that come up. Thank you.
I'll move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution with conditions approving a conditional use permit and a coastal development permit allowing indoor cultivation at 1735 Second Street, APN 002054007.
I will second that motion. And then if we could get a roundhouse vote, so it's less confusing to see who all says what.
Actually, I have I have a comment and a and a request for the commission.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thanks. So I noticed, and I spoke with Riley earlier today to double check, I noticed there was no requirements for renewable energy use by the project. These cultivation sites have huge energy footprints and while I am completely supportive of seeing these types of projects emerge within city limits and places where the infrastructure is sufficient and you have access to services, I think it it is something that should be considered. The state doesn't have a requirement this time. The county does. The county requires 100% renewable energy for all indoor cultivation. And I'm interested in seeing whether the commission has an interest in requiring that of the applicant. I would point out that our local plan from RCA or JPA that manages our power has a goal of setting 100% renewable local energy by 2025 anyway, so that the power you buy from them would be from renewable sources and a 100% renewable target to be all locally produced renewable by 2030. So if offshore wind emerges, that would be a part of this. And the state, whether we do anything at a local level or not, will be requiring zero carbon electricity by 2045, and that's through SP 100. So to me, approving a project without renewable energy requirements is really short sighted and doesn't really look to the future that we have at a state level and the goals that we have at a local level in terms of our local energy. So I'd be interested in hearing from the applicant and also from the commission as to whether they would be agreed to that requirement beginning from day one. But I did want to see a discussion on that.
Mr. Lazar, let me give you my opinion on this. I'm behind you in terms of wanting to see renewable energy in a in a high energy demand business like this. I'm reluctant to put that on the on to make this particular applicant be the the place we put our foot down. I would like to give the public, you know, at least a six month period to plan for that. And I, you know, I would really support doing that, you know, starting in in January of next year, so that so that people who are planning these kinds of businesses who are already spending hundreds of thousands of dollars have no no to think about that in advance rather than someone who's this far down the line already.
Hi, I'm Jen Renwon. I'm the operations manager of this facility and I am perfectly fine with doing that. We are okay with that.
Can you be clear what you're perfectly fine doing?
The renewable energy, purchasing that, the green energy.
For the record, it sounds like the applicants are willing to do it. I would tend to agree more with Commissioner Benson that it would make more sense in my mind to do as part of cannabis regulations for the whole city as opposed to starting by applying it to one particular application. Just seems like it would be neater that way.
I also concur with that, just also because last month, you know, we approved another project and so it's a more holistic thing. Commissioner Lazar, I agree with you and I think renewable energy is really important. And just so many things, it was looking like the state is moving that way with a lot of indoor growth facilities, which I'm relieved to hear, but I, you know, instead of doing the one off thing here, I agree with the other commissioners about making it a little more holistic. So, you know, people have time to prepare, but it's also just more of a fair thing to impart on our city. So in in that vein, Commissioner Lazar, if you still wanted to move forward with that, that is a question I have for you, or if that's something that you agree with that we can, you know, flesh out a little bit later down the road, so it impacts more than just, you know, starting in this place.
I appreciate your comments. Each of the commissioners, I certainly sympathize and I don't bring it up lightly. It's not fun to have those 11th hour types of requirements and it's much better to apply it at an ordinance level than at a project level. However, that being said, it is something that I will bring up with each project that we see with large energy footprints because I see it as an inevitability and really to prolong it is only to actually put applicants in a different difficult position down the line, in my opinion. But it won't affect my ability to support the motion on the table. It sounds like the applicant's already agreeable to utilizing renewable energy and I, and if the commissioners aren't already aware, it's really as simple as picking what tier you're in with RCA. You don't have to do any investment beyond. It's going to change your base rate and that will be seen in your monthly bill. So if if the applicant's comfortable with it, I would just ask that we incorporate that within our motion. It's not a requirement, but recognizing their willingness to include that with this project from the from the beginning.
Any other thoughts on that, commissioners? So staff, I have a question for you. In in that regards, talking about the motion and just having a little clause in that guidance on this, please.
So Commissioner Lazar is proposing to do what we normally refer to as a friendly amendment. He can make that recommendation and then the maker of the motion and the seconder would need to be willing to accept both his proposed change. His other alternative is to just go ahead and make a motion to amend the motion that's on the on the floor. And then if there is a second, you would vote on that motion first and then you would vote on the amended motion.
So Commissioner Lazar, what say you?
I'm agreeable to either approach. I would like to see it be a reflection of the applicant's choice. It's not a if we have confirmation from the applicant that they're willing to make that incorporate that as part of their project, it's not a condition of approval. It's built from, it's coming from the applicant's court and that would demonstrate the spirit in which I'm coming at this. I'm not looking to impose it as a requirement. I'm looking to see whether we can reach agreement that that's a reasonable target to begin from. So I'd like to hear from the applicant, frankly, and if they're not willing to include it, then I'd say let's leave the motion as it stands and then move forward.
We're fine with including it. We currently do that out at our other facility, Humboldt County Endors. I don't see any problem with it and I say yes.
Then it sounds like we need a friendly amendment to this.
Would you like me to offer that? So I guess the friendly amendment would be to amend the motion to recognize the applicant's offer to include renewable energy as the exclusive power source for all cultivation related power demand and and make the motion reflect that. That will be the project description for purposes of.
So then Commissioner Mayor, you would have to accept that?
I accept that.
And as the second, I accept that as well. So can we have a roundhouse roundhouse vote now? Jessica, you want to call us off?
Sorry, that's a roll call vote. Roundhouse, I figured y'all were just gonna say it, so.
Okay, please.
Roll call vote, got it. Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ariaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Jessica. Congratulations to the applicants and I'm super excited to see what you do with the build out. Thanks for coming tonight and engaging with us.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Thanks, guys.
So moving on to the next item, D on the agenda, the June 2021 zoning code update. So moving on to the next item, D on the agenda, the June 2021 zoning code update. Ball is in your court, staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you mentioned, the this is the June 2021 zoning code update text amendment. And this is the second modification to project number TA-19-0002. And the amendment is applicable in the inland portion of the city, which is shown on the map here. It's the colored portion inside of the blue line. The proposed amendments generally include rectifying inconsistencies and errors, correcting grammar, and clarifying language that is currently unclear or contrary or maybe confusing. The amendments are intended to to maintain and ensure internal consistency throughout the zoning code itself. The change to applicability of the zoning code is to require design standards applied to new construction in the SC Zone District. And I'm ready with your questions. And once you've completed that, then I recommend that you hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending that council approve. And there will be a motion available for your screen when you're ready.
All right, commissioners, any questions to staff? Clarifications needed? Sounding like no one has any questions for staff. Sorry. Oh, wait.
Didn't we already, Principal Planner Gatz, didn't we already give you some some input on this some months ago?
This has not been before the commission previously. You may be remembering, we came to you with a featured cannabis ordinance.
No, it was, so this is the zoning code update. Okay, I guess I do have just, I've got just a couple of minor comments. I liked all the revisions, Article 1 and 2, good revisions. Article 3155.304.140, tree removal. That subsection establishes permit requirements to remove trees in the residential zoning districts. And and the 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 planning commission, right before this one, had just created some fresh language around this. Protected tree reads 24-inch diameter or circumference of 75 inches as measured four and a half feet above the ground. There appears to be some inconsistency with that with the November 2020 minutes of the planning commission that regarding revisions to this code specifically, Keep Your Eureka Beautiful responded with recommendation to increase the proposed diameter of protected trees from 16 inches to 24 inches DBH. Wait, that's not inconsistent, and this is reflected. Oh, this is, that is reflected in the in the update. You caught that, okay. And five non-native deciduous trees and one new conifer appear to not have been added to the list of protected trees. There were only two deciduous trees, the black cottonwood and the red alder on the list, and both are native. Other native trees, commonery, because greenways and gulches not included in the list are are three kinds of willow, Pacific wax myrtle and coast live oak and conifer species on the list of protected tree trees that are native to California away from the coast, not not native in this area at all, include Jeffrey pine, ponderosa pine, sugar pine, red fir, which is at 6,000 elevation, white fir, which is at 6,000 elevation, and western wine pine pine that's at 8,000 foot elevation. So there's a number of trees listed that aren't really ecologically sound for this area. And so I'm wondering why they're on the protected trees list in Eureka.
They're on the protected trees list because this is the list that the that Keep Your Eureka Beautiful recommended when they reviewed the ordinance. And that was last year during the June 2020 zoning code update. And yes, it is different than what was in the planning commission minutes because the planning commission made recommendations to the city council that were ultimately not adopted by the council.
Understood. It's just, it's, you can understand why it grates on on an ecologist and forester like myself to have basically out-of-range trees that would never grow at the coast on our list of the ones to be protected and ones that would grow here off the list of those to be protected. I, should I send this to you, this this list? Or I don't know how the how the planning commission would like to deal with this. I can't, in all consciousness, as an arborist, say yes to this as as written.
So you could propose that the trees to be removed be removed and provide me a list of those, and the trees to be added be added. And then if the planning commission agrees to that, that would be the recommendation that would go to the city council, and staff would look at whether or not we would make that recommendation or just say that the planning commission had made that recommendation.
Okay. So I should send this to you or share screen with the planning commission? What's the what's the best action for me to take?
So if you want the planning commission to include your proposed changes in the update, then we probably need to talk with those this evening so that they can take a look at what's being proposed.
Okay.
And if you have a shared screen available, you should be able to do that.
Okay. Let me see if I can, okay. Sorry to be the problem child this evening, folks, but I'm just trying to do the job that I'm being asked. So you can see my screen now. So the part that's relevant is is this. Let me just get down to, I'll make, I'll create a little space here. Okay, so it's really, it's really from here down. These are my, these are my comments, the last two paragraphs. Trees, native trees that are common in Eureka's greenways and gulches, and I've walked in all of them, not included in the list are as follows. These three willow species, Salix hookeriana, Salix lasiandra, Salix levegata, Pacific wax myrtle, Morelia californica, coast live oak, Quercus agrofolia are all in the gulches and native to the coast here specifically. And then conifer species that are on the list of, and those are not included in the trees that ought to be protected. Then, while some others are, the black cottonwood and the red alder, which we also see in the greenways and gulches, it just seemed to be not include these 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 trees. And it's not that they're they're picked out just when they reach a certain size class, but they're protected, and it's all trees that get to a certain size class. And then the the pines, the conifer species that are not in Eureka are are as follows. And they, and neither are they in the Keep Your Eureka Beautiful street tree list because because they drip sap and and drop cones on cars, et cetera. So I'm not, I see these as irrelevant to the the greenways and gulches in Eureka from a timberlands perspective and from an ecological perspective. And those are ponderosa pine, Jeffrey pine, sugar pine, red fir, white fir, and western white pine. And I've given you the elevations that they exist, and they are not, while native to California and not native to the coast. So I would strike those and add these. That's what I'm asking. And this is just my opinion, and I don't know how many of you have a biological background and whether whether this just seems obvious to you or whether you want to hear a certified arborist make this suggestion or something else. I don't know what what level of comfort you need. This is just my best professional judgment. Yeah, go ahead.
Assuming we can discuss that more when we act, when we get to the discussion section after the questions are done. So I'm going to hold comments for now.
That's the only thing I saw in the zoning code update that struck me as needing revision. I'll stop sharing.
I guess I had a question for staff. I'd ask, Kristen, what's the regulatory intent of the section that we're talking about? Commissioner Benson, I listen, I take his comments. And I guess we're talking about 155.304.140 of zoning code. Says protect and preserve trees that are important to the character of the city and its neighborhoods. And I would offer, I played softball, a doubleheader at Perrigo Park in Blue Lake, and there's a giant sycamore tree, which is certainly not native to our area, but it has significance to that park, and it conveys a certain feeling as far as the history. And trees can do that whether they're native or not. And I guess I'm trying to see what the goal of this section of the zoning regulations is. Is it protective of trees regardless of their nativism? Or is it, is it more about trying to get a list of species that are appropriate to our, you know, biological area?
Commissioner Lazar, the answer to that question is yes. So originally, the tree removal portion of the zoning code had a list of commercial trees. And except for the additions that were made last time, the trees in the list were those commercial trees. So when we did the update in 2020, staff took a look at the tree removal ordinance and kind of asked a question, what is it that we're trying to do with this language? And staff came down on the side of part of what makes Eureka Eureka is the nice green areas that we have and the trees that we have, including, you know, redwood trees and those kinds of things. So we came up with the language change to, instead of just regulating commercial tree removal to actually protect some of the trees. So the list of trees that's there now, again, was a combination of the commercial tree species that were listed originally and tree species that were recommended by Keep Your Eureka Beautiful. I am certainly not a biologist, and so, you know, I would be happy to hear anybody's recommendations on the types of species that we should be protecting. And would be happy to make those recommendations to council.
My understanding, just to, if I can answer Steve's questions or Commissioner Lazar's questions, it wasn't, it wasn't intended to be native or not native. It could also include ornamental trees that were of beneficial, you know, seen as beneficial to to the city of Eureka. But it's interesting that they didn't pick the majority. Those are, the trees on that list are not the ornamental trees that people plant around Eureka. So it was really erroneous to me. If I go and tell you, I can quickly make you a list of ten trees that are not those that are the most common ornamental trees planted in people's yards and along the streets in Eureka, and it's not those. So it just seemed almost arbitrary, like somebody cut and pasted a list from somewhere without thinking about it.
Clarified, the list was not meant to be ornamental trees. You know, we were trying to look more towards gulching greenway trees, you know, and looking at the tree out my window here at City Hall. So those kinds of things as opposed to an ornamental tree that somebody might plant in their yard.
Okay, thank you. Again, those wouldn't be, those, most of those trees wouldn't survive if planted in the gulches and greenways outside of constant care in somebody's yard. They're just not ecologically fit for this area. And will quick quickly become problem trees. They would become hazard trees if planted.
Well, so following suit with that, I didn't have any other questions regarding, I mean, and Commissioner Benson, you missed a really heated planning commission session over trees previously. So, you know, it's it's not far out of line by any means. And I would like, I don't know a lot about trees myself, so having an arborist around is quite helpful. Are there any other comments on this in particular or other comments to staff?
I have comments but not questions, so I'm assuming we're going to take a comment. But then I do have some things before we make a motion.
Okay, well, if anything else comes up, just know we have, you know, we'll kick this back to the commissioners again after, so we can discuss further. Let's open it up to the public comment.
So there was no one who asked to speak on this item.
Okay. If no one is here, then we're going to go ahead and close public comment, and we're bringing it back to the commissioners, so.
Okay, I'm just going to jump in then and change gears. But hopefully, we'll come back to the tree discussion. So I had a couple of things that stood out to me that I wanted to get clarification on, if I'm understanding these correctly. And I also did just want to say thank you to staff for sending this out so far in advance. So we really had the time to think through it. We do appreciate that for sure. So the first one was this section that discussed this spruce up program, which I'm very much for. I know that Senior Planner Topoluski had mentioned it in the previous item. And the intent is to, you know, once you read a certain threshold of cost, improvement cost to your property, there are certain improvements that are triggered. And my understanding is that this update would remove the annual adjustment for inflation, which seems to me like it would essentially just lower and lower the threshold over time for when those improvements were triggered. And I wanted to, you know, get a better understanding of what the intent was there because it seems like accounting for inflation would keep the original intent. You know, the cost of that would be carried through time. So that's number one. I have two. So if staff would like to discuss that, we could open it up for discussion.
Sure, I'm happy to discuss that one. So Steph's thought behind that was the intent of this spruce up section is to bring properties that are not currently in compliance with the code into compliance with certain portions of the code. So, for example, outdoor lighting or landscaping or parking lot striping, amongst other things, are the items that would be required to be updated if and when someone submits a building plan review with a construction value of over $50,000. With the annual increase, instead of, this year, for example, we're at $53,045 as the limit after doing two increases since the code was adopted in 2019. So all of the people who are now submitting applications for building permits that are at a level of $50,000 or $51,000, they're not being required to do the spruce ups. So to me, it seems like we're going to miss opportunities in or that we could have had to require the spruce up to bring more properties into conformance with the code. So that was just kind of the thought behind getting rid of the the annual increase.
Okay. Thank you. I guess that was sort of a question. And then the other, the other thing I flagged as, you know, something that I would like to hear the commission's thoughts on was you know, something that I would like to hear the commission's thoughts on was the signage required for pedestrian focused frontages. It seems like there would be a new requirement for additional design review, which would, you know, increase the cost and the time for new businesses. Especially now, you know, with COVID, a lot of new businesses, a lot of turning over of businesses and a lot of challenges for businesses, it seems like not the, not the best time to be adding more cost and trouble on to starting something new. I think I'd prefer personally to leave it as it is. And then if it becomes an issue, we could address it in future. So those were my comments and thoughts for discussion. Thank you.
So on that one, part of the reason for the proposed change is because it's not entirely clear whether or not signs on pedestrian focused frontage façades require review. And so it's staff thought about it a little bit more. You know, just painting a sign onto the facade probably is not going to drastically change the appearance of the facade. But putting up a sign can or adhering a vinyl or a wood border, you know, rectangle to the building has the potential, I think, to change the aesthetic of the facade, especially if somebody chooses maybe to have it offset for some reason and throws the balance of the facade out of kilter. So that's kind of where staff was coming from with proposing that change.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, commissioners?
I have a comment while we're talking about, I think we were talking about the signage, but in particular, the non-conforming section. This is in every zoning regulations, non-conformities is, you know, just one of the central things that has to be worked through. And I'm a little concerned the language is written in such a way as to be so explicit to exclude other scenarios where there may be a non-conforming condition. So as 155.424.010, this is in Article Four. So the section establishes regulations for site features, buildings, signs, that's the addition, uses and lots. And then it goes into saying that we're a lot legally established prior to the code. I think it would be nice to have some wiggle room in there. And I asked staff whether or not that was deliberately excluded. So for example, there could be language to the effect of, you know, examples include but are not limited to site features, building signs and uses, so that there are other scenarios whereby we can recognize legal non-conforming features. Has it, was there a deliberate decision to exclude that principal planner gets?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lazar, which portion are you feeling was excluded?
I'm looking at a, I'm looking at page 27 of Article Four. I can share my screen if, if that would help.
So the purpose section of the non-conformities?
Yeah. It's like kind of a preamble to A, B, C, D, and E.
Right. So the reason we added signs is because non-conforming signs is a section in this non-conforming section, and it wasn't included in that list.
Right, I guess, and I don't have any problem with that. I guess my question is, is, is there, it seems like this is so tightly written that it only allows for the four categories of scenarios, features, buildings, signs, uses and lots, I guess five. But anything else that's not enumerated would be an open question. And I guess I'd wonder if we might have some wiggle room in there for other scenarios that don't fall under one of those scenarios, I guess.
So you're, you're looking for an addition of language to say including but not limited to. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
And so what would that list of including but not limited to include?
Well, I, I said, that's the whole thing is there, there could be other situations. I'm, I'm trying to think of some things that don't fall in that category. Maybe it, it's, it's non-conforming with respect to the parking regulations, doesn't have sufficient parking to meet the code. Or it's non-conforming with respect to, you know, some performance standard that's required of new commercial uses that, you know, isn't restricted to one of those categories. So I guess there's a lot of ways that non-conformance can emerge with respect to the zoning regulations. And I guess I'm just wondering if this is the section that governs non-conformities. I'd be a little concerned that it's so tightly written, we wouldn't have any treatment of that.
Specifically parking design and development standards for parking are excluded from this section or accepted? I mean, I'm happy to look at adding some other language. I'm just struggling to think of an example of something that either isn't accepted or isn't already included. So that's why I was looking to you for an example.
Yeah. And if it's, if it's, if, if nobody else shares my concerns, I'm happy to move on. I just, I like to have some of that wiggle room when it comes to these types of things, just because it prevents it from coming back. As a question.
I think it's a reasonable addition. I also can't think of anything off the top of my head. But maybe that's just because it's, you know, being sort of sprung upon us. I would be fine either way. I have a strong feeling. Well, just in speaking to that item, I, I don't have any good examples either. So if we can't put things into words that make some sort of sense or reason for us and staff, I think that, you know, we have our answer there. And I find myself often in that place though, where there's just some things that you want to add or change and there it's just so, it's so hard sometimes to come up with the specific language that would make sense or be a holistic process in it. So.
Is this the place where we ask staff to make a recommendation that meets that intent and they come back to us with it?
But didn't staff, I think staff just asked though for recommendation for wording on it. So I think we're just in a catch 22.
Well, in the interest of trying to move us forward, I think what I would just offer, if we want to go with it, I would say the section would say, except as otherwise provided herein, that would be a way to, to acknowledge things like the parking that you were talking about, Kristen, that are carved out for other areas. And then that would, that would be the beginning of the sentence. And then in the middle of the sentence, after or before site features, building signs and uses, you'd say, including but not limited to. And then that would be it. And we'd leave the rest as it's currently written.
I'd have no problem adding that.
Awesome. It's getting quiet in here.
Do we resolve the tree stuff now? Or resolve not to resolve it, one or the other?
I don't think, I don't remember there being a clear direction forward, but maybe I missed it. Was the intent to send the updated tree list to Principal Planner Gets? And have that be the commission's recommendation? And then there would be some sort of research done on that list verification with Keep Eureka Beautiful prior to the council hearing. Is that correct?
Except that this is what, according to Principal Planner Gets, this is what Keep Eureka Beautiful said ought to be in there and you know, and and the planning commission at that time didn't have anyone qualified to say yes or no to them about that. Here, here's the big thing with it. It's, it's not, it's, it's almost the trees don't matter. But what we're saying is that these trees are ones that are protected and that you have to actually go through the process to get for them to get to a certain size and, and, and go through a process in order to take it down. So it's not that we're saying it can't exist in Eureka. We're saying it's actually protected such that you, you have to get a permit to remove it. If it's over a certain size, and that just doesn't make sense to me. The only, the only real substantive thing I, I had for Principal Planner Gets on this was just that is that the protected tree ordinance reads 24 inches in diameter, but the planning commission in November, because of, because of Eureka, Keep Eureka Beautiful, they decided on 16 to 24, and then that didn't get, seem to get reflected. And either I don't understand why it didn't get reflected. And I know this went through city council also. So maybe they changed it. I thought I watched both commission, council meeting and the commission meeting, but the substantive thing is 16 to 24 inches DBH is the protected, is the proposed diameter of protected trees that came out of this commission and I thought was certified by the City of Eureka council. And then that's not what I read in, under F in the, in the article three. So it just said 24 inches. So that's the only, that's the one thing that I think has to be clarified. And then the choice of trees is, is a separate, is a side issue from that of trees to be protected and not protected.
So in June 2020, staff's recommendation was that the diameter of the tree be reduced to 16 inches.
Okay.
And the planning commission looked at it. They thought it should be much larger than that. And then Keep Eureka Beautiful recommended the 24. So when we went from 16 to 24, that was not a range. It was changing from being a diameter of 16 inches to a diameter of 24 inches.
Okay, thank you for clarifying because I read all this stuff and I, and I saw stuff that seemed to be not consistent. That's, that's the only reason I brought it up.
Yes. And just for clarity for the new commissioners, so you're making a recommendation to council as to what you think should be included in the text amendment. When staff takes it to council, we provide more recommendations to the city council. But sometimes we will say, staff doesn't recommend really council that you do this, and here's why. Or we will say staff has no comment on, you know, whether to add or not add this. Or we will tell them if we support the recommendation. So just so you're aware, everything does go to the city council. It may not come with a recommendation from staff.
Okay. So, so the recommendation that I would like this body, the planning commission then to consider is, is this, is this list of trees of, of adding three native trees that if they get over 24 inches in diameter, that they become protected at that point. And they are ones that, that I assure you are all over Eureka's greenways and gulches and in people's yards. And that we remove these one, two, three, four, five, six conifers that are really taken from the Sierra Nevada, starting at 1,000 feet to elevation 8,000 feet, and that's their range. And if they grow here, they will never get to that size. So it's, it's almost like, and if they do get close to 16 inches, they'll start to fall down. They won't live their entire life because this climate is not right for them. So it, it makes no sense to have them on the list as protected trees. They won't live to the age to get to that size without first becoming a hazard tree is basically what I'm saying.
I have no issue with taking trees that won't thrive here off of the list, or at least providing that to the council. I would be more hesitant to add more trees. It's not that I'm against willows, for example. But I'm not sure that I personally have an interest in, you know, having a permit process for their removal. Unless, you know, they're part of a coastal wetland area, in which case they are protected anyways, my understanding. So just wanted to throw that out.
Right, sure. What I'm saying is that these are the ones that exist here already and get up to that size. And seem consistent with the ones that they chose, which was red alder and black cottonwood to protect. Anyway, we, we could split hairs about the science of trees for a long time. I don't want to waste any, any more of your time because as we all know, red alder don't get, they typically fall down before they get that big anyway. It's kind of even a waste to put that on there anyway. So I, how would you like me, would you like me to send this to Principal Planner Gets? To make these changes or what, what would you like me to do? As a commission with this observation that I have?
I don't, I don't have a problem with adding to the lists. And it sounds like the ones that you were, you were targeting for removal are kind of self-regulating in that they won't successfully make it to the diameter if we stay at 24 to ever be something that would be protected. So it's not that, I do, it is a little bit confusing to me, the, the list and its kind of purpose. I, it, it really is hard for me to divine. So I'm, I'm a little nervous about removing stuff at this point. But I am willing to entertain, especially native trees that can reach a certain diameter for the reasons I mentioned earlier, that they, they can have significance to neighborhoods and the landscape. So I'm open to adding, and I would ask if Commissioner Benson is okay with leaving the ones that are on there, given that they're not likely to either be around here or be successful in the long run.
Yeah, sure. If that's, if that's what folks want to do, I'm, I'm okay with that. Let me just give you, tell you, it makes this looks to me, it's my, it's my pride in Eureka, makes us look silly. It's like we gave, if we gave a fishing license and said, if you get a swordfish over 40 feet long, you can't, you, you know, it's not going to happen. You know what I mean? First of all, we're not going to catch a swordfish in, in the ocean off here and it's not going to get, you know, that big, right? So it's, it's sort of like anyone who's in the know will look at this and just go, wow, they don't know what they're talking about in that city. So it's just a pride thing. Appears I'm the only one who feels passionate about that. And so if, if no one feels passionate about it, I can let it go. This is a team sport.
I think passing on that information to council would be the most appropriate choice. I don't know if it needs to be part of our motion or recommendation.
Okay, well, that's what I'll do. I will send it to to Kristen as written, as a comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson, for your passion. I respect it, I do. I just don't know enough about trees to really weigh in heavy or not. So I, I think it is appropriate though, that you send it and that council hears you as, as well. But passion is a good thing. Any, any other points to discuss on this for staff? Any other questions?
I had one question about Article Three, section, the parking requirements and just the basis. What was the reason for the change in terms of, I see there's a section here, 155 point, so this is page 50 of Article Three in the residential use exemptions. Part B, Section Five, where five or more new units are created, parking must be provided only for the units in excess of four. Is this a housing element implementation? Or what was the point for this additional language?
So the paragraph right above that, that applies to the downtown DT and downtown west BW and also the Hinge Industrial Zone District, which is HN. It has language in there that just clarifies that if you're doing nine or more units, then you have to provide only for the units in excess of eight. And that language was not. then you have to provide only for the units in excess of eight, and that language was not included in the language for the other zone districts where the four are excluded. So I just wanted to add that for clarity. It's come up a couple of times with staff and developers asking.
Thanks.
So as it stands, and I got a little bit lost in the weeds in there. So staff, what changes are we actually moving forward with tonight so far? Have there been any that we actually are putting into language?
I haven't heard any yet.
Okay.
Questions about things, but not.
Just making sure I'm on the same page.
Yeah, they would need to be included in a motion, so.
Okay.
It sounded like there was support for Commissioner Lazar's recommendation, if you wanted to move that forward as a motion. Steve, that'll be up to you.
Sure. I mean, if, if no one has a problem with those clarifications for the non-conforming provisions, I would ask Principal Planner Gets to make sure that she was able to catch the gist of the edits. And if so, then to just incorporate that in the package that we've already been discussing, Articles one through five.
And I would second that, if that's the motion.
I'll make that the motion.
Great. I second it.
Any other comments before we have a roll call vote on this? All right, Jessica?
All right, Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayer?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ariaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, my agenda packet is frozen on my screen. I don't think there's enough internet around here to house a lot of these meetings. So staff, can you, wait, hold on, it's popping up.
So we do need to have a motion to adopt the resolution to make the findings, and I will amend the resolution and the text of the amendment to include Commissioner Lazar's non-conforming language. And if there are any other changes that are included in the motion, then this would be a great time.
Kristen, are you looking for someone to be reading this motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'd be happy to do it. I move the planning commission adopt a resolution, making the findings required to approve a text amendment, and I further move, we forward a recommendation to the city council to adopt the proposed June 2021 zoning code update with the modifications as discussed this evening.
I will second. If we can. Roll call votes.
If I can remember everybody's names, Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ariaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Kristen, can you leave it up for a second so I can finish? Never mind. Never mind.
We'll get it tomorrow.
All right.
You're quick on the draw, Jess. Quick on the draw. All right. Well, then that would be wrapping up our public hearings, moving on to business. I don't believe we have any old business. Correct me if I'm wrong, staff.
We do not.
We do have some new business, though, to look over the Reagan resolution.
And we would be looking either for a motion to adopt the resolution or to modify it.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution, the resolution as written. It was beautifully written. I thought.
I'll second that. I thought it was really nice as well.
Roll call vote then?
Yes, please. It's so much easier on this.
Have you figured out what to call it? We can just keep going. All right. So Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson? Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ariaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Cheers.
And then so I had a question about the service resolutions, but I guess I could take that just offline with staff, you know, just typically what the protocol is. Once they're adopted, they're just signed in and then that's it.
Yeah. So what we'll do is we will assign a resolution number to this tomorrow, and then when, we'll update the title on it too, since it says vice chair, we'll change that to chair. And then when you're available to sign the resolutions from this evening, this will be included for your signature. And in non-COVID times, we normally have all of the commissioners sign it, but because of COVID, we're just having the, the chair sign.
Okay. Thank you for the information and the education. I appreciate it. Moving on then to reports and communications, directors, reports and communications, housing on publicly owned sites.
So just wanted to give you update on a couple of things that are going on. Link Housing, so for development on the sites at Sunny and Myrtle, eighth and G and sixth and M. They held a community input session for infrastructure and transportation. And I believe the invitation was sent to, or was emailed to all of you. That was on April 27th, I think it was. And then they released a survey, which they sent out, and we also included that on the city's website. And it just asked some questions about riding the bus and using trails and using bicycles for transportation. The survey closed yesterday at 5:00 PM and tomorrow at 6:00 PM, they will do, be doing another community meeting to provide the results of that survey to the public. So if you haven't already registered for that, or if you need a link to register for that, just let me know and I can get that to you. On, looking at my calendar here, on May 18th. So a week from tomorrow, the council will be considering adoption of a resolution for Link Housing to submit their application for funding for not only development of the three sites, construction on the three sites, but also the infrastructure improvements, which are being narrowed down and, and shaped by the meeting and the survey. And then staff and Link will be making a final determination as to what those infrastructure improvements will be that are included in their application. We're also working on putting together the RFP for the next go around of housing on publicly owned lots. According to the housing element, the lot locations are Third and E Street, Fourth and G Street, and Fifth and D Street. So Fourth and E Edward, sorry, Third and E Edward, Fourth and G George, and Fifth and D David. And we decided to go ahead and hold some public meetings and with the intent of inviting property owners and business owners that were within 500 feet of the locations where the development was proposed to occur. We held those meetings over three nights last week. Needless to say, the property owners and business owners were not wholeheartedly supportive of having the development be located on basically any of those sites. Prior to the meeting, the city manager had decided that we would skip the lot at Third and E Streets and also the lot at Fourth and G Street and put those on the RFP for next year. And instead, we would do development on the city hall parking lots, which are at the corner of Fifth and K Street and Sixth and L Streets. As of today, we are continuing to look at the possibility of swapping out for the Fifth and D Street site and substituting another site that's not yet been determined. So we are going to be talking with the State Department of Housing and Community Development tomorrow to talk about whether it's even possible for us to switch out sites, whether we can put off lots from this year to next year, even though the housing element says we're supposed to do them this year. And whether or not we can reallocate units to other sites and how we can do that. So at our next meeting next month, I should have more information for you on where that goes and what lots were finally decided on. The ultimate goal is to get the RFP out by July 1st. I'm not sure at this point in time that that's going to be able to happen. But I'm still going for that goal and we'll get it done just as soon as we possibly can. So happy to answer any questions if I can.
Um, yeah. How many people were engaged when asking like other business owners, just the ballpark?
So I believe the most, most we had was on Thursday evening, which was for the Fourth and G Street lot. I think we had 74 participants. That does include council and staff. And not all the council was there, just a couple of them, but we had well over 60 at various points in the evening for those meetings.
Yeah, and I guess, well, we can probably discuss next month. I, I'm just curious what the most like, what was the largest like issue with it or the largest point of contention for people?
The loss of off-street parking. Or the replacement of parking within 300 feet of the site. So originally, back up one more step. So when we took the RFP for the sites that were ultimately awarded to Link Housing to the city council, we asked them at the meeting, do you want to require a developer to maintain the parking that's on the site, or do you want to allow them to reduce or fully remove the parking? And in order to try and have the best opportunity for responses from developers, the council decided to leave that open and let the developers decide what, what they wanted to do about proposing parking or removing it or whatever the case may be. For this go around, we are going to be requiring, assuming that we still end up with the three lots that I mentioned before, we're going to be requiring that the developers either maintain the existing amount of parking on the site or that they replace it within 300 feet of the site. And I think there's a third option too, where they maintain some of the parking on the existing site and then move some of it to another site within 300 feet. So ultimately, there would be no net loss of parking over and above what is currently required. However, as a lot of people pointed out, and they are absolutely right, the, the housing uses them, uses themselves are going to potentially create more parking demand. And if they're not providing parking for those dwelling units, then those dwelling units are going to end up parking either in the available parking that then takes up the parking that's available for surrounding businesses, or they're going to be parking on the street. So the possibility certainly exists that they can get their parking requirement for their developments down to zero. And there's a couple of different ways that they can do that. They can use the exemptions or exclusions that are in the zoning code. So for example, if they provided bus passes to each one of the apartments, then there is zero parking required if everybody gets a bus pass. The other way that they could do that is they could apply for density bonuses and use incentives, concessions, or waivers to reduce parking requirements down to zero. So the possibility exists that there would be no parking required for the dwelling units themselves. But again, we were going to require that they maintain at least whatever parking existed on the site.
Sounds like this is going to be a, a fun one to dig into further.
I just wanted to take a minute to thank staff too for pushing this forward. You know, it is really important. And it can be challenging. And also just being willing to be flexible as well, you know, pushing it forward, but also being receptive to changing direction. I think that's a good balance. And, you know, counting up the days, it sounds like Principal Planner Gets has been in night meetings at least from six to eight for four out of the seven evenings this past week. So thank you for your continued service.
Wow.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Freitas. There was also a council meeting in there.
Staff, you're the real champions here. Thank you for your tireless work.
Thank you.
When, when is this likely to come across our desk? Or in front of this board?
It actually will not come before you. There's no requirement or procedure for the planning commission to review the RFP. I know Commissioner Reagan was not comfortable with that. That was part of his issue. But it's the city council's RFP, and they're the ones that determine whether or not what staff has put forward is going to go out in it or not. So I will do my best to let you know when things are happening and feel free to let me know at any point in time if you have any questions, or if you want me to add something onto the agenda so that we can talk about.
I would just like to say, just for a point of reference, that when this came to the planning commission and when it was presented to us, the parking was going to remain. The, the point of the project was parking would remain on the bottom floor and that the apartments would go up top. And so I, I'm surprised that that changed after it left the council, but that's not totally unusual that that happens. But just for some historical reference for the new commissioners, to let you know that that, that's how it was presented to us. And I think that that's how we assumed it would be going forward.
Definitely. Lots of points of, of clarity there. And thank you, Commissioner Mayer, for sure. It was interesting to see the diagrams when this was presented, you know, and, and talking about housing and how it would be structured. And, you know, and just from the perspective of areas being in tsunami zones, the idea of parking structures being underneath, we're actually, it was kind of cool to see that idea. And I am kind of sad to see some things change, but yeah, development woes, I guess, and, and trying to get people to do bids for the city. As staff was reporting. So thanks for keeping us apprised of all this, and I'm sure we'll have more questions as things develop. It's nice to, you know, at least hear what's going on with it. So there's no other directors' reports or communications, correct?
I have nothing else for you this evening. Thank you.
Any final comments from the commission? Well, I guess the last item is adjournment. So I just So I just, again, I want to thank all of you for being here and, and, and thank you for making this as painless as possible, I know a lot of this stuff is kind of hard to get into, but so the great to see peers in this community, um, caring and, and actually really wanting to be here, so thank you, and I hope you all have a great night.
Thank you, Commissioner Ariaga, nice to see you.
Thank you, everybody.